Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending this meeting of the County Council. It's a virtual meeting. I'm safely ensconced in the Nightingale Room in Winchester. And I have around me the odd person socially distant in a very safe environment. We start our meeting this morning with the first item on the agenda, which is apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies that I need to have noted in the minutes?
Thank you, Chairman. The only apologies I've received are from councillor Taylor.
Councillor Taylor, thank you. Anyone else? Good. And I'll move on to item two, which is declarations of interest. All members who believe they have a discosable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at this meeting must declare that interest. And having regard to part three, paragraph 1.5 of the County Council's Members' Code of Conduct, they must leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider, having regard to part five, paragraph four of the code, whether such interest should be declared. And having regard to part five, paragraph five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Members may declare interest now or when the agenda item occurs. Good, I shall move on then to the minutes.
Sorry, Chairman, I put my hand up.
I didn't see that, councillor Reed, I'm sorry.
When we get on to talk about Hampshire together, which I think is item eight. I am Hampshire County Council's representative on the Hampshire Hospital Trust Board of Governors and therefore am involved in those discussions. It's a personal interest, not a pecuniary one.
Thank you, councillor Reed.
Chairman, if I may. Thank you. I have a DPI to declare with relating to question item 12 regarding electric vehicle charging. It is a peculiar interest, so I will leave the meeting when that question is asked.
Yes, councillor Foster, that item is actually a framework item. Are you involved in framework arrangements or tendering or procuring?
Yes, we will be involved in.
Thank you, thank you councillor Foster. Councillor Penman?
Yes, Chairman, sorry.
Go ahead, councillor Penman.
Yes, I'm here, Chairman.
You've got your hand up, did you wish to declare an interest?
No, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, you can delete your hand.
Thank you, Chairman.
There are no other hands showing, so I'm going to now move on to item three, which is the minutes. The minutes are shown from page five of your council papers. So I'll go through page six, page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10, page 11. And page 11 is the last item, 233. Are there any corrections required to the minutes? No. Does anybody have any objection to me signing the minutes? I'm getting silence, so I'm accepting that the minutes are in order and I can sign them. Thank you very much. I will move on now to item four, which is deputations. We are just calling the deputy. Apparently he's struggling to join the meeting. We could either delay this item for a minute or two, or I could skip to the next item and we can come back. And I'm going to just see whether I should skip to the next item, if you'll just stay with me for a moment. So members, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to move on to item five and come back to item four while we try and sort out his connection arrangements. So item five is the chairman's announcements, and that should keep me busy for a few minutes and that should give them a few minutes' time to contact the deputy. So, since we last met, I have officiated at a Remembrance Day event and laid a Hampshire County Council wreath at our memorial site near the Great Hall. The event was videoed and included poem read by the Lord Lieutenant of Hampshire. It was issued as a webinar to all staff on the 11th of November. Similarly, I recently engaged with the chief executive to honour staff who have had 25 years and 40 years' service, again creating a webinar for use shortly. And I'm very pleased to announce some awards which we've been given and some staff announcements. First of all, the County Council's Property Services has received national recognition in the Electric Vehicle Innovation and Excellence Awards of 2020. This award was for the successful establishment and implementation of the central southern regional electric vehicle charging infrastructure framework. This innovative framework was the winner in the Public Infrastructure Strategy of the Year category, which celebrates the work of public sector bodies that have supported the growth of electric vehicle usage in the United Kingdom. The framework provides a simple and good value procurement route to a major supplier for the rollout of a full range of charge points. To date, some 64 public bodies have signed up. Next, the Lookout at Leap. The Lookout at Leap Beach, which provides a range of visitor services at the heart of the Leap Country Park, is a regional finalist in the 2021 Civic Trust Awards and will now be considered by a national judging panel. It will also be considered by the Salwyn Goldsmith Awards Panel, which recognises universal design excellence in the built environment. These prestigious awards are granted for building projects which make a valuable contribution to place making and enhance the public visitor experience. We will be notified of the outcomes in January. The facility is run by the county's countryside service. It was designed by Property Services and delivered by a local contractor based here on the south coast. The Oakmoor Secondary School in Borden has been recognised as a 2021 Civic Trust Awards regional finalist. The county's property services designed and managed the delivery of this 750-place secondary school to provide an inspirational learning environment for the Borden and Whitehill communities. The school is run by the University of Titchester Academy Trust. A strong partnership was developed to enable the new facility to be a state-of-the-art education campus with a full range of curriculum and community spaces. The council contributed significant funding along with the DFE and local developers to relocate the school into the heart of the expanding town of Borden. In Adults Health and Care Department, David Ross of Havant Day Service has been awarded his Social Work Degree with first-class honours. Lucy Platt is an activity coordinator and Fiona Hare, who is a care assistant, both from West Home, achieved their Level Three Diploma in Health and Social Care. And now about Anne Dudley and Peter Hall. On the 9th of October, members and supporters of the National Association of Care Catering came together at the NACC Virtual Awards 2020 to recognise the exceptional contribution of care caterers in this extraordinarily challenging year. A huge congratulations to Anne Dudley, the county's care catering support officer, who won the award of Catering Manager of the Year, and Peter Hall, head of kitchen at Canary Parrot, who won the Our Catering Hero Award. Sue Corsey, who is the national chair of the NACC, said, "Care caterers have shown without a shadow of a doubt how innovative, dedicated, compassionate and selfless they are, and how fundamentally important they are to quality care. They have ensured residents who suddenly found themselves isolated from the outside world continue to receive nutritious meals, and always with the specific needs and overall wellbeing of each resident and customer at the heart of what they do. And I do particularly say thank you to Anne Dudley and Peter Hall, and well done to both of you." Clear jump from the strategic procurement was awarded with the award of Chief Constable's award at the ceremony in August. The chief constable was keen to say thank you and officially recognised the achievements made by the county, by the county's procurement in general and clear in particular in providing services to the constabulary. In ETNE, Helen Harris has recently been awarded an honorary member of Mode Shift. This is great news for Helen and for ETE at a time when active travel and the emerging local transport trend number four is high on the agenda. So we congratulate all our staff members who have received or contributed to these awards, and indeed, as I say, to those who received recognition for 25 and 40 years' loyal service. We are proud of our staff and proud that they have provided the best possible service to residents in Hampshire, particularly in the face of the difficulties faced by them thus far in 2020. That concludes my chairman's announcements, and I'm now going to ask whether we have the deputy. The deputy is now present and available to us, so I'm going back to item four so that Mr Mike Sim can provide his deputation to this county council meeting. Thank you. Mr Sim?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thanks for inviting me to talk to you. My name is Mike Sim and I'm addressing you on behalf of the Kings Barton Residents' Association, which represents the interests of residents of Kings Barton, which is a new development in Winchester, eventually having 2,000 dwellings. The Residents' Association, which provides a route northwards from which is an independent organisation and is not aligned with any political party. I'm hoping you can see me all right, because I want to show you a picture here of the plan of Kings Barton and you can see on that plan that.
Could you hold it up a bit higher, because we can see the word kings? Okay, you're a bit out of focus.
A bit narrow.
You're in focus, but you're too low. Come up a bit? Okay, that's more or less okay.
That's all right, is it?
Yeah, I think it's about as good as we can indicate, Mr Sim.
Good, thank you very much, Chair. Right, so this plan shows the main Andover Road, which provides a route northwards from which is the city centre. To the east is Kings Barton Development, including Barton Farm Primary Academy School, which opened in September. To the west lies the existing settlements of Hairstock and Week and the Henry Beaufort Secondary School. You can see, I hope, in red the footpaths that connect Hairstock with Andover Road and Andover Road with Kings Barton. There's no crossing point on Andover Road connecting these two footpaths. And please, just to point out, you can see about 120 metres below the, to the south of the footpaths, Mount Batten Court, I'll come back to that later. So now I want to show you a picture from the Hampshire Chronicle, I hope you can see that. That picture shows our MP Steve Bryne at this same location on Andover Road where the two footpaths meet. And he's with the head teacher of Barton Farm Primary Academy School, that's Nicola Wells, and some of the parents who live in Hairstock and Week and who have to cross this road to take their children to or from school. The picture below is, that's rather a fuzzy picture because it was from the article. Hopefully this is a little bit better and you can hopefully see where the 50 mile an hour sign is. And also you can see that the road dips away to the north. The vertical alignment of the road is not very good at this point. This side of the 50 mile an hour sign, the speed limit is 40 miles an hour. Right, so this is a seriously dangerous place to have to cross Andover Road. There's considerable traffic on Andover Road, which links Winchester with the A34, and traffic speeds on this section of Andover Road are really high. The sideline, as I was explaining, for motorists because of the dip. Those motorists approaching the city from the north on the A34, coming onto Andover Road. There's very poor vertical alignment, so they can't see pedestrians easily. And a pedestrian was killed here this year in January at this location. Turning to the primary school, currently the primary school has 10 children who live in Hairstock and Week, crossing the road to reach the primary school every day. There's just one class at the moment at the school, it's a new school, and that's this reception class. And next September, the plan is that the reception class move up to become year one and two new reception classes will be added. And this may well imply that around 30 children are having to cross the road from Hairstock and Week to get to their school, the primary school, every day. And the numbers will increase year on year as the school develops. In the opposite direction, secondary school children who live in Barton Farm, Kings Barton, or in Headborne Worthy have to cross Andover Road to reach the Henry Beaufort Secondary School. In addition, residents who live in Kings Barton, they want to go to the local shops in Hairstock or indeed the local pub in Hairstock have to cross the road. For all of these reasons, the number of pedestrians wanting to cross Andover Road is likely to increase dramatically in the future. The Kings Barton Residents' Association currently represents some 270 households living in Kings Barton, that's a number of occupied dwellings. And the association has developed a petition whose primary purpose is to request that Hampshire County Council acts in two ways. Firstly, installing a crossing at the site of this fatal incident, improving the walking and cycling routes and engineering the road for safety and slower speeds. And secondly, reducing the slower, the speed limit to a slow 30 miles an hour rather than the existing fast 50 and 40 miles an hour, reflecting the requirement for a crossing there, the need for a crossing, and also the new residential nature of Andover Road. The County Council is preparing a local cycling and walking implementation plan at the moment, and your consultants are proposing to extend the existing 30 mile an hour speed limit nearer into the city along Andover Road, northwards as far as Mount Batten Court, which I'd identified for you before, very close to the crossing. So in practice, by making the speed limit 30 miles an hour at the crossing, it will be only necessary to extend the 30 mile an hour speed limit by a few hundred metres. The petition has already attracted over 500 signatories and it's gained the support of our MP Steve Bryne and of local city and county councillors, both Conservative and Liberal Democrat parties. It's also gained the support of a number of organisations. That includes the council's Kings Barton Forum. It includes the Barton Farm Primary Academy School, Headborne Worthy Parish and the Winchester Walking Strategy Group. There is a plan to close Andover Road in the future and develop its traffic through the heart of the new developments. This is planned to happen after 650. This is planned to happen after 650 dwellings are built and occupied. It's taken three years and nine months since the first dwelling in Kings Barton was occupied to reach 270 dwellings occupied. Carla Holmes, the developer, advised that it is likely to take at least another five years to reach 650 dwellings occupied and to have Andover Road closed to traffic. We cannot wait for this closure to happen. The danger for pedestrians crossing Road, Andover Road, is now obvious and immediate. One of the primary schools recently told me that a couple of weeks ago, she and her children were nearly hit trying to cross the road at this point. If somebody is hit, it won't be an accident, it will be a predictable fatal casualty. I'm sure none of us here want another fatal casualty to a pedestrian at this location. I implore you, I beg you as the county council, to take this matter extremely seriously and act now as a matter of urgent priority to provide a safe, controlled pedestrian crossing with a reduced speed limit at this location on Andover Road. I know that the residents of Harestock, Week, Kings Barton, and Headborne Worthy will be immensely grateful to you if you can do this for them. I understand that there may be section 106 or community infrastructure level levy funding for these roadworks, so that the cost of the crossing may not actually require significant or even any funding from the council. Turning to the secondary purpose of the petition, that is that heavy goods vehicles often use Andover Road as a shortcut through Winchester Centre when the A34 is closed, for example during night time maintenance. This causes sleepless nights for the residents on Andover Road. The secondary purpose of our petition is to ask the county council to...
You have one minute remaining.
...to encourage the further measures, to encourage the use of approved diversion routes when the A34 is closed. This can be achieved through changes to crossing phasing and the banning of heavy goods vehicles from using the city centre as a through route. It's unnecessary and undesirable in an historic, historic city like Winchester to allow heavy goods vehicles to drive through its centre. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Sim. Thank you for keeping to time. The appropriate county council department will probably look very closely at what you have said and will no doubt respond to you in due course. We move now on to item six, which is the leaders' report.
Chairman, councillors, good morning. I will try to be... Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, councillor Mans. Would you like to proceed with your report?
Yes, Chairman, I'm very happy to do so. Chairman, councillors, good morning. First of all, I would like to add my own thanks to all those people that have received awards and recognition. Well done, everybody. Secondly, I'd like to straight away move on to discuss the present pandemic. As you know, I've always said that there are three things we have to do to get over this particular crisis. First of all, to have a clear sight of the objective, which is to reduce the spread of the virus and eventually eradicate it. Secondly, to work together to do it, and thirdly, to look after each other. And in this context, I wanted to say a few words about where we are. We are now in the second day of tier two restrictions, and I can tell the council that we've seen the seven day rate fall as regards infections as a result, and as a result of the national lockdown, from a peak of 160 per 100,000 in mid-November, to a rate today of 78 per 100,000, and that's still falling. These are very encouraging indicators because they show that we're moving in the right direction. I would also like to point out that we now have the opportunity, if we all continue to work together, to ensure that we move from tier two down to tier one on the 16th of December. And with this in mind, I know that my own engagement management board and the public health board are working very hard in this direction. In addition, I've been meeting regularly with our members of parliament, and I have a further meeting tomorrow in order to discuss how they can assist us with getting the messages out about the importance of people abiding by the rules so that we can actually move down to tier one sooner rather than later. I'm also conscious that we are in a position now where we can perhaps see the end of this pandemic, now that we have one vaccine at least, having passed the necessarily, necessary regulatory rules, and is going to be available very shortly for certain categories of the population. This is good news. We will be working very closely with the National Health Service to ensure that this vaccine is rolled out logically and as quickly as possible, but safely as well. In this context, I think it's important to actually under-promise and over-achieve. We don't want to raise people's expectations too high that everything's going to happen tomorrow, but we want to nonetheless ensure that the maximum number of people get vaccinated as soon as possible, and to encourage those that have doubts about the vaccine, vaccine itself, to have those doubts put to one side, because this, this vaccine, the one that has been the regulator, 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 has already agreed is safe, there's no doubt about that. I'd like to move on now and say a few words about schools. We have worked very hard indeed with our schools, with preschools and with academies, to ensure that we're giving good advice to them when they have an outbreak in a particular school. And I'm pleased to say that our attendance records for both primary and secondary schools are now over 6% ahead of the national average. We give advice, the decisions are made locally, but we work together to ensure that we're doing best for the children in those schools. I'd like to end by simply saying this, that we've heard, quite rightly, a lot of support for all the frontline workers in the NHS that do so much to ensure that this virus is met and defeated. I would also like to give my thanks to all those teachers and staff in our schools, and indeed in your schools in Hampshire, for what they've done. They're part of the frontline as well, and there are various other public sector employees that also are in the frontline alongside nursing and medical staff, our care workers, those that run our care homes, our public order officials, the police, and indeed our own staff and our officers, under the excellent leadership of John Coghlan. One of the things we have managed to do in this county is work together, I believe, better than many other parts of the country, and one result of that is that our rates of infection have been kept relatively low compared with both the region that we're in, in the South East and nationally, and therefore I have great hope that we'll meet the challenge ahead of defeating this pandemic, initially getting into tier one, then getting the vaccination programme up and running, and finally come back to some form of normality in the spring. That completes my report, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Mans. Move now to item seven on the agenda, questions under standing order 16.1.1. I've had a number of questions submitted to me. The first is from councillor Fran Carpenter. If you would like to read your question, councillor Carpenter.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, my question is to councillor Fairhurst. Along with Devon and Cornwall, Hampshire are piloting the new Covid testing system for family members and close friends of those living long term in care homes so that safe visits can be made. This is absolutely vital now for the wellbeing of our elderly care home residents, and I'm delighted Hampshire is at the forefront of these trials. Would the executive member give us an update as to how the pilots are going and if there have been any issues so far? Thank you.
So I now call on councillor Liz Fairhurst, who is the executive member for adult social care and health, to respond to that question.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Carpenter for your, your question. Hampshire is taking part in the visitor testing pilot that started on the 17th of November, and in Hampshire we have eight care homes taking part. The pilot is currently due to end on Monday the 14th of December 2020. Feedback from our involvement via the three Hampshire County, Hampshire Council, County Council care homes has been positive and has enabled dozens of appropriate and safe personalised visits after many months of conducting visits at a distance or through screens and or windows. Now, new guidance was published on the 1st of December by the Department of Health and Social Care for the national care home sector. This visitor testing scheme is now being rolled out across England to support relatives to visit care home residents by Christmas, and we welcome this development, but at the same time recognising there will be additional requirements on care homes and relatives to enable this to happen.
Thank you. Councillor Carpenter, do you have a supplementary question?
No, I don't, but I thank councillor Fairhurst for her answer. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Alan Dowden. Councillor Dowden?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, my question is to the executive member for the economy, transport and environment. There have been continual severe flooding problems for many years on School Lane and around the School Lane roundabout on Templars Way in Valley Park. The police have been repeatedly forced to close off the area. Will councillor Humby inform me and the residents of Valley Park when this will be resolved?
So the executive member for economy, transport and environment is councillor Rob Humby, the deputy leader of the council, and I call upon him to answer the question now.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank councillor Dowden for his question. The highways team are aware that these two areas have experienced surface water flooding, and the work is underway to further investigate the causes in order to try to prevent this reoccurring. Surface water in School Lane discharges along a ditch that is located with a very overgrown area, and this area belongs to Test Valley Borough Council, but I'm pleased to say the Borough Council have recently cleared the first section of the ditch, and once it is completely opened up and the outfall uncovered, we will then be able to gain access to further inspect the piped part of the system using CCTV to determine if any additional structural remedial work is required. In the meantime, we will jet through the piped part of the system to remove any debris and so on, to ensure there are no immediate issues impeding the drainage. The Templars Way roundabout also needs further investigatory work to identify any system failures, and this is currently being arranged now. If any major structural drainage works are found to be necessary, these will be considered for next year's operation resilience programme, subject to limited resources and the relative priorities. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Dowden, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Mr Chairman. The councillor Humby may or may not be aware, but for years I've been seeking work to be done here, and I was told almost three years ago that money would need to be put in the capital programme because there were major works to take place there by the county council. And he must agree with me that people have put up with this for far too long, and I very much hope, which he spoke about the resilience programme, that this will, you know, happen in not too distant future.
Thank you, councillor Dowden. Councillor Humby?
Yeah, I thank councillor Dowden for that and fully understand that. What we're seeking to do now, and working closely alongside the EA, is to look for solutions that are long term solutions. So I absolutely understand that and very happy to have a further conversation with councillor Dowden after the meeting or for the day. Mr Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
We move on to the next question from councillor Jack Porter, sorry. Councillor Porter?
Thank you very much, Chairman. The Hampshire County Council policy regarding the provision of free school transport changed from September 2019. What was the income from reception year privilege places in the 1920 academic year, and how much did it cost to collect that income?
Thank you. The executive lead member for children's services and young people is councillor Patricia Stalard, and I'd like her to answer that question now, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Porter for the question, and good morning, everyone. And to answer the question, the expected income for chargeable privileged places for year R children travelling on local authority funded home to school transport was just over £30,000. But Covid's impact meant that the actual income was in fact just over £17,000. The number of children whose families paid to travel was 76. Further, 37 children travelled, but their charge was waived for low income reasons. The cost of levying and collecting that charge cannot be easily calculated, but it is very low. An online process applies to the application, the child's record is already in the central pupil database, and the traveller record and fee paying aspect is associated with the existing child record. The charge is invoiced and parents can pay, pay, excuse me, by various automatic cashless means, which takes a few minutes to complete. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Porter, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, please. The current arrangements feature favour the better off and the very poor, but not those in the middle, and importantly, not those with a climate conscience. Would the executive member allow parents to continue to be funded for their preschool provision until the term after their fifth birthday, when they can travel on the school bus for free?
Thank you councillor Porter. You will know that government policy states quite clearly that free school transport cannot be provided until a child has attained compulsory school age of five years. At present, our home to school transport bill is around £32 million per annum, and it's rising. However, I think councillor Porter would agree with me when I say that it might be appropriate for Westminster to review their national policy on home to school transport, especially in the light of Covid and the need for increased funding. I'd like to reassure councillor Porter that we have indeed already drawn this matter to central government, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Martin Todd. Councillor Todd?
Thank you. It's a question to the executive member for economy, transport and the environment. What modelling results does the county council have on the impact of the A31 Brexit lorry park on Winchester and Oxford traffic?
Thank you. As mentioned previously, that's councillor Rob Humby. As mentioned previously, that's councillor Rob Humby. Councillor Humby?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank councillor Todd for your question. The local modelling has been undertaken by the Hampshire Nilo Y Local Resilience Forum. And that was to understand the impact on Portsmouth International Port and the surrounding road network. For the A thirty one, the existing traffic flow data has been considered along with a likely increase in demand for the EU bound freight traffic that would need to visit the temporary triage facility. While the A thirty one westbound lane is closed all to all through traffic, we use the eastbound lane under a counterflow arrangement. And given that the A thirty one is a fairly lightly trafficked major road, no congestion or significant delays are expected. Though some journey times may increase as a result of the temporarily reduced speed limit. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Todd, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do, Mr Chairman. On November the twenty fourth, a small test by French customs officers rapidly led to five mile queues in Kent. Is he being too complacent on this? Has he considered diversion away from the A thirty one, for example, to go down the Itchen Valley? What sensitivity testing has been done, including understanding the impact of on Winchester and Oxford if Dover and other south coast ports jam up? And what measurement and interventions is he planning in case worst case scenarios happen?
Thank you. Councillor Humby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. A lot of this work is being done with us and in association with the LRF as well. And I think we need to understand that the A thirty one is only one part of operation transmission. So it's a part of a package and this has been looked at closely. I mean, you need to understand, I mean, your question said about it being a lorry park. It is not, it's a triage centre. And what I'm really pleased is that I think it was on the thirteenth of November, we met all the highways, sorry, the operators, the transport operators. And the ones we met contributed to over eighty percent of the deliveries to the port. So this just shows you the engagement we've had with the hauliers. They understand what their duties are. So we've been very clear, worked very closely with them. And I'm confident that the process that will work in conjunction with all the other measures that have been put in place, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Derek Miller, your question?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. My question is addressed to councillor Mans. Would the leader agree with me that in a county dependent on the tourism, aerospace and aviation sectors' economic contributions, and with hopefully a quick return to high employment forthcoming, a local sustainable and active airport is an essential part of local infrastructure? And hence the much needed extension to the runway at Southampton Airport has to be supported.
Councillor Mans is the leader of the council. Councillor Mans?
First of all, I'd like to thank councillor Miller for his question and say yes, I totally agree with his statement. I can confirm on two occasions during twenty twenty, I've written formally to Eastleigh Borough Council in response to various stages of the planning consultation to express my support as leader for these proposals. My support is primarily in recognition of the importance of the airport to the local Hampshire economy, but also in recognition of the importance of regional air travel as a potential catalyst for greener, greener short range flights. The current application is critical to the future of Southampton Airport as a viable regional airport, meeting the needs of modern commercial airlines. Its loss would be enormously detrimental to the local area in terms of direct and indirect employment and the associated supply chain and on the economic competitiveness of Hampshire. Many people believe that air travel generally is, is something that we should avoid because of its effect on the environment. I agree with that up to a point. But I think it's worth bearing in mind that now the amount of CO two emissions due to what we all do when we use the internet, when we use wifi, because of the amount of streaming that goes on, now exceeds the amount of CO two emitted as a result of air travel. Air travel submissions, emissions are going down. Emissions due to the internet are going up. I make that point just to get things in perspective. As regards the runway extension itself, if this goes ahead, it will result in less noise for certain communities at both ends of the runway, rather than more noise overall. And therefore, I believe that we should do all we can to ensure that this airport stays and that the runway is extended.
Thank you councillor Mans. Do you have a supplementary councillor Miller?
No, Chair, I don't have a supplementary and I'd just like to thank councillor Mans for a very extensive response. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Mans, the council is actually indebted to you for your leadership over this very difficult time. We know that you're extremely busy with many, many things, as well as chairing the Covid response for the county. Councillor Jackie Branson, your question?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is to the executive member for education and skills. Could the executive member give an update on the measures taken by schools to the positive cases of Covid nineteen among their students?
Thank you. The executive member for education and skills is councillor Roz Chad, whom I call upon now to answer the question.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillor Branson for your question this morning. If a school has a child or a member of staff with a positive test result, they are asked to seek professional support from public health. The DFE has set up a hotline which is open seven days a week. The schools ring that national hotline to seek public health support. If there are multiple cases or there are complexities, then the school is referred to the county council's local health protection team. This team contains specialist public health professionals who guide the head teacher in their decision making. Special schools and specialist provisions like pupil referral units are all directed to the local health protection team under the leadership of our director of public health for expert advice. Head teachers have reported feeling well supported by public health and are following their advice when they decide which pupils should self isolate and the length of self isolation. Hampshire Schools in school improvement team have been supporting head teachers throughout this process and our communications team have been supporting head teachers with drafting letters to parents and with any media inquiries.
Thank you councillor Chad. Is there a supplementary question councillor Branson?
Oh, yes, Chairman. Can you give me some examples of how you are supporting teachers with both remote and blended learning? Specifically where some children are in a class where some children are self isolating and some are attending school?
Absolutely, thank you councillor Branson. As you've referred to, most schools are using a blended approach and some online face to face teaching time as well. Some of this has been pre recorded and that has advantages for those, if children don't understand the lesson straight away, they can go back and, and have a look again. Some tasks are being set by teachers and then that is being embedded with learning. And teachers can then assess those tasks and provide feedback and tackle any misunderstanding at a later date. We are also seeing many teachers when they are themselves self isolating or if there are a small number of children that are having to self isolate in that class, being using their, their home devices and being on screen in their classrooms with the support of an LSA or a, a teaching assistant. So they are still in front of their class, if not virtually. And this has been seen as being really positive as well. Thank you for allowing me to express what good work and remote learning our schools are, are currently doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, delighted to hear that. Councillor Andrew Gibson?
Thank you, Chairman. My question is for the executive member for recreation and heritage. Hampshire has invested in its country parks, which are now at a very high standard of excellence. How has this investment assisted local residents in the difficult Covid times?
The executive member for creation and heritage is councillor Sean Woodward. I call upon him now to answer the question.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and I'm grateful to councillor Gibson for his question. And I'm sure, like me, as a great lover of the countryside, that councillor Gibson would have found our country parks to be a great respite during the pandemic. And I know our residents have used them to a huge extent over the greater part of twenty twenty. The investment in country parks has had a positive effect, I feel, on the service's ability to manage during the Covid nineteen pandemic. Specifically, that includes things like improved and expanded visitor facilities, toilets and catering spaces. And they've made it easier to manage both social distancing and to keep the areas clean and safe for our visitors and for our staff. We've extended and we've got new car parks, we've got added capacity there, which enables us to cater for an increase in visitors. And we've certainly experienced that as access to green space has become increasingly important, particularly during lockdown. And finally, the investment in the automated parking system, while probably not popular with everybody, but it has made a major difference by providing us with data, which means we can better manage our visitors. And the increase in car park compliance has provided that vital income, which has helped to mitigate some of the losses and the increased costs. But not surprisingly, the service has sustained because of the Covid nineteen pandemic.
Thank you councillor Woodward. Councillor Gibson, do you have a supplementary?
Just to say that we're very lucky in Hampshire that our heritage sites are so well supported and preserved. And thank you councillor Woodward for your response.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Steve Foster?
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the executive member for economy, transport and environment. Could the executive member please provide an update on the additional grant funding that government is providing for the second phase of the emergency active travel fund regarding walking and cycling facilities?
As mentioned before councillor Rob Humby?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillor Foster for his question. On the thirteenth of November, the Department for Transport, DFT, confirmed that the county council had been allocated three point two eight million to fund schemes promoting walking and cycling as set out in our bid submitted in August. Now, this was ninety five percent, the indicative allocation for Hampshire. And this was in line with most other counties as well. So in essence, the funding provides for the following active travel measures. So this was to look at transforming high streets and local centres. And this covered areas including Winchester, Eastleigh, Pickersfield, Romsey and, and some others as well. Encouraging cycling and walking for local journeys through implementation of new cycle lanes and other walking and cycling improvements, including improved cycle signage and trials for low traffic neighbourhoods. Also innovative measures to transform behaviours, and this is really important. Cycling, parking in schools and businesses, including e-bikes. And we are looking at trials, e scooter trials as well, working alongside other authorities and organisations within those, looking at those trials. It also looking at strategic corridors, so continuous footways, for example, long parts of the A twenty seven. And the monitoring and community engagement supporting the above schemes, which community engagement, monitoring and, and evaluation. A key condition of the funding set out by DFT, which has been made for all local authorities. It is for schemes to be developed in consultation with local communities. That's residents, businesses and other stakeholders. This highlights the role of the district and town councils in ensuring the successful local delivery of the programme. The county council must submit our engagement plan to the DFT by the eleventh of December. As, as well as updating the DFT, once engagement of all the schemes have been completed. We are finalising and preparing our engagement strategy, which includes a new innovative web based platform to, to support engagement alongside meetings with stakeholders and letter drops and surveys. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary councillor Foster?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Humby for that detailed explanation. I do have a brief supplementary. Are you sure we'll have the full support of the districts across Hampshire? It's really encouraging to hear that consultation is, is going to take place. As, as I'm sure many are aware, we had issues in Hart with a Hart scheme under the previous grant scheme, that businesses and residents, many opposed, although some supported. But that was primarily due to the lack of consultation and engagement. And the scheme had to primarily be removed. I'm keen that schemes like the Hitches Lane cycle path project.
Can you move on to the answer to that supplementary question please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, absolutely councillor Foster. Obviously, this is about working in partnership. And it hasn't always been easy in some areas. I know you've had a few deputies in your areas. But before engaging with the public, these plans clearly will be discussed with the local member and the district council. So it's absolutely critical that we work alongside and in partnership and we get those agreements to implement these plans. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Gary Hughes. Councillor Hughes?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. I have a question for the executive lead member for children's services and young people. What plans are being made for the distribution of the two point eight nine million pounds of government funding to be distributed to help to support the most vulnerable children and families during Christmas, half term and the Easter twenty twenty one holidays?
Okay, as mentioned before, the executive lead member for children's services, young people. Councillor Patricia Stalard, would you like to answer that question please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Hughes. The Covid winter grant scheme is, as you say, aimed at vulnerable families, particularly those with children, and will offer financial support with food and energy bills this winter. Following announcement of the funding on the tenth of November, the county council and a range of partner organisations formed a task and finish group to develop a comprehensive proposal to be delivered and known as the Connect For Communities Programme. Working with schools, colleges and early years, the proposed programme will deliver food vouchers and other financial support to a wide range of vulnerable families for school holiday periods between Christmas and the end of the financial year. Some decisions relating to this programme were made on the thirtieth of November at my decision day, when I agreed to release the sum of one point five six million pound of funding to schools, colleges and early providers for the purpose of purchasing a fifteen pound voucher per child per week for the two week Christmas holiday and the February half term. An estimate of almost thirty five thousand children will receive those vouchers. That same decision day also included funding of two hundred and ninety thousand for discretionary grants to schools and colleges so that they can further support vulnerable families, including those not currently eligible for free school meals and other benefits or financial support. Furthermore, it is proposed that Connect For Communities will provide direct financial support to households through a citizen's advice and a range of other voluntary sector organisations working directly with vulnerable families and will establish a holidays activity scheme for February half term. Through grant funding, it is anticipated that the programme will also support the development of community pantries and a range of other community led projects to meet local needs across Hampshire. However, I must stress that decisions relating to these initiatives will be made at my next decision day on the ninth of December. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes, do you have a supplementary question?
To confirm this one minute remaining, Chairman.
Thank you very much, that comprehensive response councillor Stalard. I had a supplementary. It's always been recognised that Hampshire is eighty five percent rural and fifteen percent urban. What measures are being taken to ensure equitable distribution across to the rural areas as well?
Chairman, I will give a very brief reply. As I have already indicated, there will be a community grant scheme which will enable local organisations to bid for funding to deliver food and fuel. And that will be especially useful for places like community centres who have useful for places like community centres who have commercial kitchens throughout the district, including the rural areas. Partner agencies and indeed members who know families who lack cooking skills can request a slow cooker, and we will actually deliver slow cookers to those families who have no other means of cooking. And the family support service and other direct support services will be able to access food and fuel vouchers to provide those families that they work with. And in addition to that, we will be setting up something which is known as community pantries. But the details of all this are in my decision paper for the 9th of December, and that is already published on mod gov, you can see the detail in the paper. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Stellard. We ran slightly over time with the last answer, but I thought it was important to get the complete answer from councillor Stellard. So that, so I'm sorry if one or two members felt I rushed them, but I could see we were going to run out of time. So we move on now to item eight, which is a part one item. These are matters for decision in part one. First item is item eight, the health scrutiny delegation of powers to joint health scrutiny committee on the Hampshire Together proposals. You'll find that on pages 13 to 18 of the papers, and I asked the chairman of the Health and Adult Social Care Select Committee, who is councillor Roger Huckstep, to introduce this item, please. Councillor Huckstep?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and good morning, and good morning, members. Can you hear me? Because I've been having slight problems with my broadband this morning.
I can hear you.
Good. And if it were to be intermittent during this time, can I put councillor Keast on notice to take over if the worst happens? Thank you. Right, this is a straightforward request to the council to establish a joint committee for the overseeing and scrutiny of this rather special project, Hampshire Together, which is to establish a new hospital in the Basingstoke area. Because it is a major change to health services in the county, it's necessary for our local authority, Hampshire County Council, to oversee it and for other local authorities to join in if it impacts in any way on them. And we've had notice that Southampton Hospital would like also to join in this, and that's why we've established a joint committee. It could well be also that other local authorities at a later stage may wish to become observers. So this paper sets out the terms of reference of that joint committee, and it also nominates the members of our council who will take part in that committee, and it also includes the terms of reference. So that is the proposal, Mr Chairman. I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you councillor Huckstep. Are there any questions? Any debate? Right, well then I move on to the recommendations, I'll take all three recommendations as one. I have a late entry from councillor Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman, I did raise my hand, but I appreciate you can't necessarily see all of them. For my part, I do welcome the formation of this committee. Some members may know I was involved in the reconfiguration of the situation in Dorset, which involved a number of personal visits down to Dorchester. I don't think that that would be necessary in this case, thanks to technology. One of the things about this, Chairman, is that health bosses are generally very good at looking at things from the perspective of clinical matters and making them more efficient. But for my part, I think that we need to balance that out with the need for local accessibility. Certainly, the proposals are going to impact on the thousands of people that live in Hampshire, and we need to ensure that this isn't just a consultation about clinical efficiency, but it's also about access to health services and how we might prevent people from getting ill in the first place. It's all very well indeed having monolithic hospitals that are good at treating people, but what we've learnt from past experience is that if people have great access to local health hubs, then that's often a much better way of keeping the population of Hampshire healthy. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Harrison. Councillor Todd?
Yes, I had a couple of questions and a comment as well, and maybe if councillor Huckstep can respond. For obvious reasons, given that the Royal Hampshire County Hospital is across the road from my division, it's extremely important for residents in my area. Lots of local residents rely on it, of course, but equally importantly, many of them work there. So I'm very pleased that the question of the quality of consultation and engagement is in scope, because at the moment I'm hearing a lot of concern about the lack of clarity between the different options on some of the issues that matter most to people, which feel like they're being fudged. What exactly will the urgent care offer be in Winchester and Andover for that matter? And how will the emergency department or departments work together is something that I know people have particular interest in. I think people understand that even now ambulances don't automatically go to the nearest hospital. And I know from my professional work, where I work for a health charity, which is a personal but not a prejudicial interest, although I have been in meetings with the NHS talking about things like urgent care, that the NHS is seeking to use things like NHS 111 first more to manage urgent care. It's also been clear with Covid that some of our previous assumptions in terms of what we need from hospitals and where services should be based will need reconsideration. And as councillor Harrison said, there are very important questions about access, not just how people without cars might use any new site, but also how will the minimum wage workers who clean our hospitals get to an out-of-town site, for example? Now, I realise we can't and shouldn't answer these questions here, and so I had the following questions I wanted to put to councillor Huckstep. Firstly, will it be possible for directly affected councillors, county councillors to be able to make deputations? A second question is that district councils, who are represented on the HASC, so I guess the rules about district councillors not being able to make deputations or get involved may be different, will they be able to engage with the J-Hos? Because this is one where there are a wide range of interests at stake, and I think it's important that we use the powers of the committee to hear the concerns that people have and ensure that those questions are followed up on by committee members.
Thank you. Before I call the next councillors to speak, councillor Huckstep, would you like to just answer the questions and the points raised by both councillor Harrison and councillor Todd?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. As far as deputations are concerned, it's not covered in the terms of reference before us this morning, but I see no reason why deputations shouldn't be made. And the first phase of what we'll be doing as a joint committee, we'll be looking at the different proposals that have come forward from the public consultations, and they have yet to take place and complete. So it's still very open at the moment. I'm very happy to receive email suggestions from any of our members on what line we should take. We're having an initial, we hope to have an initial meeting subject to your approval this morning to outline our way forward, and the first substantive meeting will probably be early in January.
Councillor Grzewski?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I have some serious concerns about the proposals, and I'm very pleased that this scrutiny panel is being set up, because I think that the proposals will require some very robust scrutiny on behalf of residents. The proposals, where people have heard about them, are very controversial. Sadly, still not many people know about them, and we've already done one round of consultation during the summer. This is going to affect people from my division in Chelmsford, the borough of Eastleigh, all the way up through Winchester to Basingstoke. They say that they still haven't decided where services such as A&amp;E, very importantly, and consultant-led paternity services will be, whether they'll be in Basingstoke or Winchester, although I think we can probably guess where the leanings are. They say several proposals are being put forward, several options, but two of them have already been discounted before we get to the next round of consultation. In terms of access and the way people use the services, it's going to have a big impact. So as I say, I welcome what's in the report and look forward to how things develop in January. Thank you.
If I, thank you, I could just remind members that the recommendations concern the setting up of the committee rather than the setting up of a hospital. But if we could have councillor Porter? Councillor Porter, you address.
And, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yep. We can hear you. Well, now we can't.
Right, as you can see, I've talked to four fine services right across the district. I live eight minutes out of Winchester, so there you are. And I just wanted to raise a couple of points, really. I hope that in the HOSC it will address the issue of how Hampshire County Council could enable any hospital to function to the best for its, to the best of its ability for the whole community, the employees, the patients and their visitors. So that's about the, well, the internet, obviously, and also the complication of sites and because we have, will have a number of services that will be not necessarily on the main site, but on satellite services. So this involves public transport conversations and potentially road changes. And I would like this HOSC to also investigate how the county council could enable this to work the most efficiently. I'm also a little bit concerned that a deputation at the moment, if made by one person on a subject, can't be revisited for six months, and I wondered if that, particularly for district councils and county councils representing residents from right across from Eastants, right across to Andover and up to Basingstoke and back down to Eastleigh, would have the opportunity of effectively breaking that rule or changing that constitution so that they could make a number of representations to that committee on a subject over a period of time?
And before I call on councillor Huckstep to answer the question that you've just raised, bear in mind that district councils do not normally make deputations to committees, they would normally submit papers and they would normally submit reports. And the deputations would be from individual members of the public usually. Councillor Huckstep?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Porter, I don't have an absolute answer for your deputation question at this stage. I don't see any reason why I cannot make inquiries about such deputations, and when it comes to our first meeting, we'll determine whether or not we can accept them and give reasons for accepting them or not accepting them. But I, we are in a, hopefully, a democratic organisation, and I would welcome deputations, providing they're relevant and they are factful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or members wishing to speak? Raise your hand, please, so that our officers can identify you.
We have councillor Humby, Chairman.
Councillor Humby.
Mr Chairman, yeah, thank you. I just thought I'd like make a point, because transport was being mentioned by councillor Todd and councillor Porter, just to reassure all members and councillor Huckstep that clearly our strategic transport planners are very well aware of proposals. And of course, this is only one proposal of many significant developments potentially in and around the proposed new hospitals. And of course, we are in discussions continuously with the bus companies as well. So it's just to reassure all members, and of course, we would hopefully be part of that and councillor Huckstep's committee when it comes to that point. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. May I now move on then to the recommendations? And I did say I'd like to just take all three on block. Is that all right? Good. Could you then press your voting button? Abstain? Those who wish to abstain, please press that. Those who wish to vote against, could you please vote now? There being no votes against, there being no abstentions, the recommendations are therefore carried. Move on. Oh, I think people are still voting. Are there any against or any abstentions? We have one against. Everyone else is for, so thank you very much, the recommendations are carried, we move on. Item nine, considers appointments. Now, there is an update report attached separately in your mod gov papers. Councillor Manns, would you like to introduce this item as leader of the county council?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. These are fairly routine appointments to fill vacancies on various committees, and I would just like the council to approve them under the recommendation at the end of the appointments on page 19 of the agenda.
Thank you. To speed things up, are there any questions or comments or debate? If not, I will ask for votes who abstain, votes who are against, and then I will just pass on to the next item as approved recommendation. So first of all, could you get your voting buttons up? Any abstentions? Any against? The rest of you are taken off for, in which case, recommendations are approved. You can delete your voting buttons now, and we'll move on to agenda item 10. Agenda item 10 is the financial update and budget setting and provisional cash limits for the financial year 2021/22. They're on pages 21 to 74 of your papers. Now, that is a considerable amount of work to get through. So we will have both the leader councillor Keith Manns and councillor Stephen Reed, who is the executive member of Commercial Strategy, Human Resources and Performance, who will introduce this item. They will share the time that is available. I may, if necessary, give extra time for this item to those two gentlemen, and then we shall go through questions and debate, and then councillor Stephen Reed will answer questions, and then councillor Keith Manns will answer your final questions and sum up before we vote. Obviously, if there are any amendments, we will take those en route. So councillor Keith Manns, the leader of the council.
Thank you, Chairman. The recommendations that we will be asking you to approve are on page 22 of the agenda. I'll say a few brief words on each of the four recommendations, and then I will pass on a more detailed, a more detailed response on some of them at least to councillor Reed. The first recommendation is really directed at the impact of Covid-19 on our finances, both this year and in the coming years. You'll find in the report, I think it's on page 29, if I'm right, yes, tables on page 29 and page 30, some fairly good indications of the amount of money we have had to expend already on Covid-19 directly, and the amount of direct and indirect expenditure we expect in the coming years ahead. Clearly, the expenditure directly on Covid-19 has been significant, but I think there are two other heads of expenditure that are worth mentioning, and that is in relation to our future needs, and in particular, the income streams that we will actually no longer have, and those will affect our expenditure as well. The income streams I'm talking about are, first of all, business rates and business rates and the council tax. In both cases, we estimate the amount that we get for these items each year. And we believe in the coming two years, those amounts will be rather less than the estimates we've made in the past. And that does explain some significant problems with our finances going forward. Secondly, we carry out a number of commercial activities ourselves, which have this year obviously been curtailed by the pandemic. Again, that will affect the outcomes of some of our financial deliberations. To cut to the chase, at the moment, based upon the latest predictions and the projections for the future, and based upon the amount of finance we've received from central government, we will probably be £40 million adrift at the end of this year. That means we will dig into our reserves, reserves that we have precisely these sorts of unpredicted positions that we find ourselves in as a result of the pandemic. And in this respect, we are in a better position than many other counties across the country because we do our finances on a two-year basis. And therefore, we're in a position to say that we can cover the cost this year of the pandemic, those costs that haven't already been covered by government. But we will need extra support in the future. And over the three-year period, if you look on page 30 at the position after for our forecast, the end of September, we will be, have further finance required to the tune of £55 million. Bearing that in mind, clearly, it's important and recommendations C and D refer to this, that we look at the savings programme in the future. And this just sets out the timetable to do that. Clearly, that is going to be affected by how long the pandemic lasts, the support we get from central government and the way we actually transform our own activities to take full advantage of efficiency drives and the use of technology. The final point is in recommendation B, and that relates to capital expenditure in ETE, which I'm certain that we will look at as well during the debate. Now, I'd like to hand over, with your permission, Chairman, to councillor Reed to give a more detailed response to this very detailed and important paper on our finances, particularly in relation to COVID-19.
Thank you. Because this matter is of such importance to us, I will give councillor Reed latitude to go over his normal time and your time. But I will add the same number of minutes on to the leader of the opposition when he speaks. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'll start where the leader finished and thank Carolyn Williamson and her team for providing this comprehensive report on our current and projected finances. That's not just me being polite, but an important point. This report is a major piece of work to inform our decision-making today. It's necessarily detailed, covering as it does not just COVID issues, but also business-as-usual monitoring, transformation programme updates, the budget process for 2021 and also preparations for 2023. So I'll pick out some main points, if I may. A good place to start is the table above paragraph 39. This indicates that as at the September return, our gross losses for the current year were predicted to be some £180 million. The table above paragraph 42 then shows what happens when we net those losses off against the government grants received and other adjusting factors. They show a net unfunded costs and losses balance of £40 million for the current year, and the leader has referred to that. But the COVID impact won't end in March of next year. Our officers have therefore projected forward to offer us a prediction of the impact on our medium-term financial position. And paragraph 53, the table shows that over the next three years, there's a projected cumulative gap of about £210 million. As you will recall, this tracks the current position back to where we were pre-COVID. And put simply, therefore, if the government wishes to compensate us fully for the impacts of COVID, it will need to allocate a further £210 million over the medium-term period. Members can be assured that those figures have been communicated. Whilst we can hope for the best, it's prudent that we plan for somewhat less. We've therefore looked to see how well we're able to cover the £210 million shortfall ourselves. By reprioritising all the available reserves and other funding sources, we can identify £160 million. If we used all of that up, it would leave us extremely vulnerable to any further financial shocks. But it means that the government must provide at least a further £50 million for the county council to be financially viable in the medium term. And I put that starkly. We're not trying to gloss over the severity of the problem we face. But other serious events are happening as well as COVID. Paragraphs 87 and 90 identify two areas which are critical priorities that we simply must fund now because of the health and safety implications. They cover in-house residential care and nursing homes and ash dieback. This money can be found from one-off gains in treasury management. And members may recall that there is currently the need, sadly, to fell 130 trees in the Havenet area that are dying and could provide a health and safety risk to local people. Then, then follows in the report a series of lists of areas under further unavoidable pressures, investment pressures and investment priorities, which we will consider further in February 2021. By then, we'll have the detailed results of the spending review and will be looking to set the 2021 budget. Whilst I'm sure you will agree that they're all important to us, our identity, our ability to fund these items will be dependent on our projected financial position at the time. Between the cabinet meeting and today, the government's high-level spending review was announced on the 25th of November. It was very much as predicted by the deputy chief executive and director of corporate resources, and she sent an on-the-day briefing to all councillors. In summary, it feels that the government has listened to our representations and has provided additional COVID funding along with some money to support increasing demands for social care across children's and adult services. In addition, core spending power is to be increased through further flexibility in council tax levels, specifically to support adult social care. We expect to receive the Hampshire-specific allocations in the week commencing the 14th of December, at which point the information will be incorporated into the budget-setting report for county council on the 25th of February 2021. We're all disappointed, although it's understandable, that we again have to operate with a one-year settlement rather than a multi-year settlement that would have given us greater financial certainty. It places a greater onus on us to plan ahead on the basis of sensible assumptions. To that end, paragraphs 149 and 150 identify that we'll continue with our tried, tested and successful approach to planning and delivering our productivity improvements programme over a two-year period. You'll note the breakdown of the £80 million targets and also the timetable, which will take us to the necessary delivery of those productivity improvements by no later than the 1st of April 2023. And I say no later because one impact of the constraints under which we're operating is that projected productivity improvements must be achieved on time because the reserves no longer exist to finance any late delivery. Colleagues, the financial situation is as difficult as any you or I have ever encountered. And that's not surprising in the context of a health crisis that has impacted so hugely on the national economy. Some councils, I think most actually, are in even more difficult positions than Hampshire. The report and recommendations before you today show that we're making decisions based on thorough analysis of the current situation and realistic projections in the future. So I commend this report to you and invite you to support the recommendations presented on page 22. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Reed. I now call councillor Keith House, the leader of the opposition. Would the timekeepers please add an extra two minutes to councillor House's normal time? And I'll probably allow latitude thereafter as well. Councillor House.
Yes, thank you. Chairman, I have a question for the leader of the council first, before I speak, which is, are the county council's accounts signed off by the 30th of November deadline? And if not, can the leader explain to the council why our auditors do not consider Hampshire to be a going concern?
Councillor Reed will take the answer, I gather.
The information was contained in an email that the director, Carolyn Williamson, sent out to all members. The political point about the audit position is entirely false. The auditors, in a very difficult time for the nation, are asking for some more information. We have no doubt that the information will be provided to them and will be satisfactory to them. And we are anticipating a successful sign-off. We're also anticipating that we won't get the sort of caveats that have been placed into other councils' accounts, for example, Eastleigh, where some very awkward comments have been made. And my advice to councillor House is that houses that live in glass shouldn't throw stones.
I'm going to call for a response.
To the leader of Eastleigh Council and the leader of the Liberal Democrat Group. Have I got permission to make a few comments?
Yes, councillor Manns, please. I'm sorry, I thought that was a complete answer from councillor Reed, but by all means. And then I shall ask councillor House to open the debate for the opposition. And thereafter, I shall call for questions from other members. But I think it's important to hear councillor House in full rather than have a lot of rapid-fire questions first. So councillor Manns, if you could just respond to councillor House's question. And councillor House, if you could enter the debate proper.
Councillor House will know that in the middle of this pandemic, finance has been really difficult for everybody. I think it's really important to bear in mind that because of the transparency of this council, we've explained our problems, which are being resolved. They are of a technical nature. They have no bearing on the quality of the accounts that were produced. And as councillor Reed said, I think councillor House has to be just a bit careful in what he says. Let me read a piece of text from the auditor's report for Eastleigh Borough Council, which I think is directly relevant to his comments. It starts, material uncertainty relating to a going concern. A going concern meaning Eastleigh Borough Council. We draw your attention to note 101 in the financial statements, which describes the extent and duration of the current income losses, the council's ability to reference debt, the cost of replacement borrowing and the council's ability to borrow further should there be the need to do so. As stated in note 101, this indicates that a material uncertainty exists that may cast significant doubt on the council's ability to continue to provide the current level of services without an increase in planned income. Now, I'm certain that Eastleigh's problems are related to COVID-19. But our own issue about the delivery of our final audit statement pales into insignificance compared with the comments made by the auditor for Eastleigh Council. And then, right at the end of the accounts that theoretically was signed off for Eastleigh Borough Council, the auditor says, we cannot formally conclude the audit and issue an audit certificate until we have completed the work necessary to issue our assurance statement in respect of the audit of the authorities whole of government accounts and conciliation pack. The point I'm making is that all councils are going through a difficult patch. And for councillor House to suggest that this council is at fault in ensuring that we have the sort of assurances from government that we need to go ahead is I suggest he should look closer to home if he's going to make comments like that and sort out his own council before he criticises us.
Thank you. I now call upon councillor House to enter the debate proper. And will the timekeepers please note that we want to add an extra two minutes at least to councillor House's?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. And it's always interesting that councillor Manns and councillor Reed always try to divert attention from this council's conservative financial crisis by talking about other councils. It happens as a matter of routine. The big difference between Hampshire County Council and Eastleigh Borough Council is that Eastleigh Borough Council's accounts have been signed off by their auditor, which is not the case for Hampshire County Council. So let's stop dancing on the head of a pin on that one, shall we, Chairman? Because this is their most damning report. And let's also not blame all of this on the health crisis. It is much, much deeper. Again, we are told that the county council is not financially viable going forward. Councillor Reed even said that himself. Again, we are told that the government has broken its pledge to fund the cost of COVID. Again, we are told we have a £210 million financial black hole. Again, we are told that we will still be required to make £80 million of additional cuts over the next two years. Hampshire will have taken over half a billion pounds of cuts, 40% of our budget, 40% of our services. What we are not told, what we are not told, Chairman, is what this administration's plan is to get us out of this mess. The answer is they don't know. What we are not told, Chairman, is what Hampshire Conservatives MPs will do to help. And the answer, Chairman, is nothing. They are following our shambolic and incompetent Prime Minister's instructions. What we are not told, Chairman, is which services will be next in line to be axed. And the answer is you won't say, will you? Councillor Manns won't say, councillor Reed won't say. None of you will say. Councillor Humby won't say, councillor Wobler won't say. So which libraries will be next? Which waste sites to close? How many extra years before our roads are repaired? Which public health services to be lost before the next health crisis? Which assets to be sold off? Will any bus services survive? How will we care for our elderly and our children in need and those services be run down? Of course, the answer is you won't say because you don't want to say before next May's elections. The consequence of this financial disaster could inexorably be that, like Northamptonshire, the government will have to send in commissioners to take over. And we are not being told any other answers because every month that goes by, every month that goes by, our finances get worse, the problem gets deeper. And so now we do have the ignominy, the public disgrace of not being able to get our accounts signed off by our auditors. Chairman, this financial incompetence is on the Conservative Party's watch. It's like Norman Lamont singing in his bath after Black Wednesday. It's like Gordon Brown bankrupting Britain after the last financial crush, crash. And Chairman, so I wonder just, has the leader, like Liam Byrne in 2010, yet started writing his letter to leave in his desk next May? I can see it now, dear councillor House, I'm afraid there is no money. Kind regards and good luck, councillor Manns.
Mistful thinking. You're muted, Chairman.
Thank you. I now open question time to members who wish to ask questions. And then we will move on to debate. And each member will then have a member time in order to make a speech. But first of all, questions. But first of all, questions to councillor Reed and councillor Mans. There are no questions coming up, so I'm now going to move towards debate. The first hand I see going up is councillor Huckstead. Councillor Huckstead.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, uh, that, that was finger trouble, but I do support the recommendations of this paper. Thank you.
A fat finger. Um, councillor Latham is next. Where are you, councillor Latham?
Yeah, coming. Can you hear me?
I can now.
Right, oh, good. Um, well, I, I've listened to the speeches so far and it's correct that the report of Karen Williamson does set out in clear terms the financial position of the council in the light of that pandemic. In that report, I think she mentions at least five times that without further government support, we'll, that we will, in the medium term, become financially invi- inviable or unsustainable. She goes on to say that, given the level of savings already achieved and the shortened times for delivery, she expects the savings in 20, in T23 to be less about transformation of services and about what the services may be reduced or paused. And this is the first time I think I remember her saying that. So I think we've all got the message today. But having said that, her response, report then goes on in conclusion by saying that whilst the financial prospects for HCC are as difficult today as we can ever remember them, the fact remains that our past prudent and well-planned financial management has, in her view, placed us in a strong position to face the challenges going forward. And let's face it, today, when we look forward and we talk about unsustainability, we're looking at T23, not 2122, we're looking at T23 and we are already planning for that and hopefully putting some money aside to deal with T23. And that's at a time when many other authorities are trying to balance their books for 2122. This council has always been upfront in its financial planning. It delivers by financial management which looks on a two-year programme. So we plan ahead of time, take the difficult decisions early, and that's why we're in a relatively strong financial position today. It's not a disaster, as councillor House seems to think. Moving on to the pandemic and the COVID losses, both councillor Mans and councillor Reed have set out the position. And, but the, the, uh, spending review of last week does set out that there should be more money for extra social care grant. Uh, the report that we have before us today uh, is based on a 3.99 council tax, uh, increase for the coming year. But of course, that report of the spending review gives us the option, if we want it, to put it up to 4.99%. There are other positive things in this report, which, in my view, show that the government is actually listening to the concerns that we have. So as I look forward to 2122 and budget setting, I have every confidence in Carolyn Williamson and her ability to produce a balanced budget for this council, and I commend her for the work she has done over the past decade. And I support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jonathan Glenn.
Uh, thank you very much, chairman. I was listening to the debate. Um, I am rather saddened by the, uh, by making it, let's say, negatively political when we're, as the leader has just said, we need to work together. If we don't work together on this, um, we will have problems in the future. And it is now time for us to be working together. Um, um, in the words of the statistics checker, uh, we will do what it takes. Now, if you have faith in that, we will get through this financially. Um, the government can't afford to have failing councils. Um, they just can't because it, it needs the council to deliver the decisions that it takes on behalf of the, uh, the people. Um, so it's really a matter of whether one sees the glass half-full or half-empty. I know that our administration on the county council sees the former, we see it as half-full. Um, now, we have the reserves over the short term to cover the problems. Had this county council been under a different administration over the last 20 years that I've been on it, we wouldn't have had any reserves and we would have been in a very difficult position. Um, so I am completely in favour of all the recommendations. And lastly, I would like to commend, um, our treasurer, Carolyn Williamson, and her staff for an extraordinary piece of work. I went through it with a fine tooth comb. It took the best part of half a day. Because when you read it, you've got to take time to read between the lines. And I find it absolutely fascinating. Um, so it must have taken a lot of time, a lot of work, and I would like to thank her for it. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Glenn. Are there any other members who wish to speak before I call on councillors Reed and Mans to reply to the debate? Please raise your hands, and I can see popping up. I see, I've got a hand going up. Councillor Collett, is it? Yes, councillor Collett.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I think, um, we are, as several people have said, in a very difficult situation. And I was a little bit surprised to hear councillor Latham saying that it wasn't a dire situation. Um, I don't know what sort of report you'd have to have uh, to not consider it to be a very bad situation that Hampshire County Council is in. There are two elements to this. The current element, of course, is the COVID situation and the funding issues related to that. And I think we all remember the very clear statement made by government, and councillor Glenn has just referred to it, that do what it takes, we will fund it. And of course, we did what it takes, and where's the funding? That promise has been well and truly broken. And councillor Glenn feels that the government can't afford to let councils fail at the end of the day. We've been quite happy to sit back and see us slashing our services because of austerity. And I don't have the confidence, I don't have the faith that the government will, will actually bail us out of this situation to the extent that would protect our services. We've already seen devastation of many services across Hampshire over the 10 years of austerity. And that's the second element of this, isn't it? The austerity programme, that hasn't finished. And in fact, I see councillor Perry has put his hand up to speak. I very well remember councillor Perry telling the council that Hampshire County Council, under the Conservatives, was proud to be part of what the government were doing through the austerity programme. Well, you may have been, I'm not. I think the devastation to services across Hampshire, which we all must see, even if some of you deny it to yourselves, is extremely serious, £500 million, forty per cent of our budget. Um, it is awful. It's the worst time I've ever known on Hampshire County Council. Councillor Glenn says we need to work together. Yes, I would love to work together if you were actually seriously addressing the government's attack on our finances through the austerity programme. I, I heard of councillor Mans, uh, speaking on Sky at the weekend about the COVID funding. Well done, councillor Mans, I'm glad you did. But I think the county council very seriously needs to, um, take on the government on our overall funding situation, the devastation that's been impacted by COVID over the last 10 years, sorry, not COVID, by austerity over the last 10 years, and the serious way that services are being impacted upon. There's been no serious attempt to fight that, uh, I guess based on what councillor Perry has said. And chairman, the silly comment made by councillor Glenn a few moments ago, that if there had been, uh, an alternative administration, there would be no balances left. Absolute nonsense. There are £600 million in balances and our budget amendments over the year amount to about £15 million out of that £600 million. So let's kill this absolute nonsense that we hear talked about over and over again, that a Liberal Democrat administration would not provide balances. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Perry, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to refer to the point recent, just made by councillor Collet, um, of course, the government was right of David Cameron when it came in to try to remedy the problems that they inherited. And they were very wise to, uh, bring public expenditure under control. Uh, and had that not been done so, then the government and the nation would be in a much harder position now than it, uh, that it would have been. Uh, having said that, I think it's important that we in local government, say to central government, they do need to address the pressure that is on councils. We cannot have a situation where it is only council tax that is going to go up. Uh, clearly, it will have to go up. Clearly, we have to address those problems. But I think it is important that the message is given to central government that all local government is currently facing, uh, severe pressures. Fortunately, we do have balances, uh, and councillor Collet referred to them. I wonder just what the debt per head is, for example, of Eastleigh Borough Council. We were told, I remember at the budget-setting, uh, meeting by councillor House, we must take more risks. Well, thank goodness we didn't take those risks. And thank goodness we are in a strong position so that we, we have time now to address uh, the crisis that we're, we're currently facing. So I certainly congratulate the director of finance and her team for what we're doing. And I certainly, um, support the amendments, the proposal that is brought before us.
Thank you, councillor Perry. Councillor Porter.
Uh, thank you, chairman. Um, we've talked earlier about doing the right thing and, and what it takes. Well, unfortunately, the government's one-year funding settlement will not be doing the right thing. Our MPs, we must make them sure that they very much want the Hampshire, we want the Hampshire MPs to settle more than one year, uh, for us, especially as the council is expected to prove it's a growing concern further ahead now. The true picture is of a council having to put its hand in its pocket in response to Boris Johnson's announcements, in many cases, before the full plans for those rollouts have even been agreed. This puts this council in an extremely difficult position. Councils need more certainty, especially as we try to support people's jobs and local economy, as well as their health too. Only the Conservative government can do this, and only you as a Conservative council can achieve this for Hampshire.
Thank you. Councillor Todd. Councillor Todd?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, um, propose a rec, uh, an amendment to the recommendations, an addition, uh, since there seems to be consensus on a particular issue, which is we add 16E, which is, uh, so we recommend to council council that it condemns the government for its failure to do whatever it takes, in quotes, to support local government in meeting COVID costs. Um, and unanimously agrees on, uh, to call on MPs and ministers to ensure an adequate funding settlement for local government.
Yes, it would have been, um, much easier to deal with that amendment if we'd received prior knowledge of it before the meeting. We actually required to, to circulate the, um, the amendment to all members in writing so that we can consider the amendment properly and we were then debate the amendment and vote on the amendment. Now, because we have got a virtual meeting, I can't do that. Um, but I, what I can ask you before we go any further is, do you have a seconder for a paragraph E? And I don't have knowledge of paragraph E, because you rattled it off. But, you know, I need, we all need to see what it says. So first of all, do you have a seconder? And secondly, if you do, I'll need to pause the meeting while you're able to display that in writing on the screen for all members to see.
Yes, I, I have typed it out in chat, so the full wording is there.
Hold on, hold on. Do you have a seconder? Councillor Collet?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Now, could you please display the amendment so that the public can see it as well as just people?
Oh.
Chat system.
Uh, I don't know that I'm able to share a document. Um, I'm happy to copy it into Word so that I could, if somebody lets me share and do it in a way where that is all that's shown.
Chair, chairman, to confirm, um, one of my colleagues will share the amendment, um, in just, uh, one minute or so.
We'll pause while the officers resolve this for you, councillor Todd.
Thank you.
Do you wish to adjourn the meeting, um, chairman, or should we?
Yes, I can pause the meeting while we sort out councillor, councillor Todd's amendment. I'm sorry, members of the public, but we, we didn't receive notification of this and therefore we're having to deal with it on the hoof, as it were. Uh, we are normally a very well-run council and we normally do these things in a far better manner. I do apologise, but I will adjourn the meeting while we resolve it. Members, we are now live again. On your screens, you should see a recommendation proposed by councillor Todd and seconded by councillor Collett to an amendment which adds to the recommendations 16A, B, C, D, on page 25, the following recommendation, which is, it condemns the government for its failure to do whatever it takes to support local government in meeting Covid costs, and agrees to call on ministers and MPs to ensure an adequate funding settlement to the local government. So we will now be discussing this amendment in the minutes that follow, before voting later. And I shall then discuss the voting regime when we get there. Now, first of all, I have councillor Todd to move this amendment.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you for the chance to add this amendment. The intention of this amendment is really to capture something that seems to be a matter of some consent between both sides. We may not agree on the state of everybody's accounts, although I speak as a cabinet member of Winchester City Council at a Lib Dem authority that has just had its accounts approved unqualified in time. But we do agree, I think, and the paper is clear, that the government has not done whatever it takes to support local government in meeting Covid costs. There is an outstanding deficit unfunded, as the paper makes clear, and has been made clear in the debate, as it says. The county council welcomes the further financial support that has been provided by the government. But even following this allocation of funding, we still face a gap of 39.7 million in the current year. So it is clear that the government has not done whatever it takes to support local government, and that much at least is consensus. I'd hope also that there would be consensus on the need to call on ministers and MPs to ensure an adequate funding settlement for local government. I'm sure there's consensus between us all that adequate funding of local services, for all the reasons that were outlined by councillor House, is something that we would all strongly support. And we're well beyond, we're now at the stage where any further cuts clearly will mean a reduction in service to residents in Hampshire. And as has been highlighted, leaves questions for the long-term viability of the county council. And I suppose the only question which we've danced around to some degree, and where councillor Glenn might not agree with me, is what our attitude is towards the government on this. And I have to say, from our side and from my perspective, that I consider a broken promise to be a matter of condemnation, and not something that we should be relaxed about, not something that we should support. So in essence, and the reason why I proposed this during the debate, is that what I seek to do here, and what I've sought to do here, is capture what I think is a consensus in terms of the fact that the government hasn't done whatever it takes to support local government in meeting local costs. What I would hope would be a consensus in terms of the need to call on ministers and MPs to ensure an adequate funding settlement to local government. And what, shall we say, might be the consensus between those of us who have a realistic view of the government's likely funding behaviour going forward, although possibly not a Pollyanna-ish optimistic one, but a consensus between those who are naturally sceptic, sceptical of the government's funding plans, and, shall we say, those perhaps Conservative members who have been burned by experience of what the government does in terms of funding local government, to agree that we should condemn them for their failure to keep their promise. And on that basis, I would ask the whole council to support this amendment and capture the consensus that has mostly emerged during this meeting in the resolution that we passed today.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Collett, as the seconder, do you wish to speak now or towards the end of the debate, as I indicated earlier that you could?
Chairman, I think your suggestion is wise, and I'm happy to speak at the end of the debate before councillor Reed.
Thank you. Councillor Carew.
Thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I fully understand where this amendment is coming from, and I share, you know, quite a lot of the concern. My worry, however, and obviously not being surrounded by colleagues and being in a virtual environment, I can't tell. But what worries me is is the political or the politicised nature of the amendment. So councillor Todd knows full well that if a Conservative council criticises a Conservative government, well, it doesn't look very good, does it? Could it not, in order to get, I don't know how other colleagues feel, but in order to get cross-party support for this, could we not change councillor Todd's changes to something like, it reminds the government that Prime Minister Boris Johnson has promised to do whatever it takes to support local government. That way, it is less condemnatory, less party political, and I would hope that we would have cross-party support at that, because we can say that we're not happy about it. But rather than being negative and saying we condemn it, even if we do, we're less likely to get anything out of the government, I feel, if we take an antagonistic approach. I still, I think, in order to get cross-party support, I think words like, it reminds the government that the Prime Minister has promised to do whatever it takes, might be more judicious. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Todd, this is your amendment. Do you wish to soften it, to the extent that councillor Carew has just suggested? Councillor Todd?
Neat. If, I would be interested in knowing perhaps the views of more Conservative councillors as to whether they would feel able to support it in that circumstance. Obviously, I have an interest in this.
This is a debate at this stage. Thank you, councillor Todd. So now I have councillor Dalton, followed by councillor Bolton, followed by councillor Perry, followed by councillor Carpenter, followed by councillor Glenn, councillor Wade, and councillor House. Then I think we might want to draw a line under it, so if you want to come in, could you please raise your hands now? Thank you. Now, the next speaker then is councillor Dalton.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just got to get something off my screen here. Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm very supportive of the amendment. I don't want to be political, just like the leader or anybody else. But of course, what I'm concerned about, and every councillor should be concerned about, is the services to the people that we represent. We've already heard that 40%, a big cut in funding for our council over the latter years. Well, quite frankly, we can't afford, and Carolyn Williamson has already said, we can't afford not to have more money. Otherwise, we won't be viable as a councillor at the end of 22, 23. So I believe the amendment is essential, and as the wording states. Because our MPs, and that's the only part that I will be critical, is I don't think in their position, strong position that they had, even when Mrs May was in power, they had a stronger position than ever to have gained things for our council. I can remember when the Northern Ireland MPs, when they needed votes, used that vote to get a lot more money for their areas, quite frankly. And I believe we, to a point, have been failed, and the people of Hampshire have been failed. And I don't want to be any more political than that, but I want this amendment supported. So because it'll make the government think they did promise us the full recompense for the Covid costs, and they haven't done that. And social care, even with additional 1.99% in the council tax, if it were to happen next February, will be totally insufficient. So that's why I really do support this motion. It is amendment. It is so important. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton? Councillor Bolton?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now.
This, the wording of this amendment, I can in no way support. This country has the biggest national emergency in over 70 years. In the last eight months, the government has been announcing virtually every day billions of support across the country, to the extent that the national debt is now hundreds of trillions of pounds. So in no way can I support an amendment which talks about condemning the government, given that all this government has been trying to do in the last eight months. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Perry?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think councillor Carew made a reasonable suggestion and compromise here, and I hope councillor Todd will consider it, and the leader of the council. We don't yet know what the financial settlement is going to be. Now, I think we can all reasonably say we think it's very late in the day for the financial settlement, and we would all rather it was not just a one-year settlement. But we don't yet know what it is, so I think it's, in any event, premature to criticise or condemn anybody until we know just how much money is going to come in the financial settlement for local government. What I think we can all say, and I hope we would all agree, is to say to the government, I'm quite prepared to remind them of their promise, that they would do whatever it takes. But equally, I think we should urge them to make sure that we do have the money that is necessary so that we can carry out our reasonable services. So long as councillor Todd was prepared to say, we remind the government of their promise, and we then call on MPs and ministers to ensure an adequate funding settlement for local government, I would hope that would get the unanimity that we can give, and we go ahead. And that would be a much stronger case to make. If you want to start condemning the government before we know what they're going to actually make, that is really premature, and we can't really fairly do that at this stage.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor Perry. I'm going to continue with the members who've asked to speak. But I'm going to ask that in the background councillor Mans, councillor Reed, and councillor Todd engage in conversation to see whether unanimity can be reached. If not, we will leave things as they are. So while that's happening, councillor Carpenter.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, one of the Lib Dem councillors there just said that he had a more realistic view of what's going on. I'm afraid they're living in cloud cuckoo land. This government has done what it can. It's done a huge amount of work. It's given us a huge amount of support in all ways. And it hasn't finished yet. The work of the government is not finished yet. We don't know what support they have planned for the council. I'm afraid the Lib Dems are only bringing this forward just to snipe for political reasons. We all know why. And one interesting thing, I think, is that we hardly hear from their MPs in Parliament, the few they have. I've hardly heard a word from any MP trying to get money for councils in Parliament. When I listen to the Parliament channel, I hear very little from them. So I will firmly not support this amendment, or any, I'm afraid, any woolly change to it that they try to get us to support. I just won't. And I'm certain that we will work well with the government for the best outcomes for Hampshire residents as we come out of this very, very difficult situation for anyone to deal with. Thank you.
You're muted, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Carpenter. Councillor Glenn?
Thank you, Chairman. It was very nice having him on with silence, quite frankly. A very famous politician once said, politics is the art of the possible. Now, I actually have quite a respect for councillor Todd. He's an erudite man. And unfortunately, his education has let him down in this case. The elected majority of this chamber will not accept the amendment as it stands. It will not accept the words condemnation, and it will not accept the words failure. So it's a pity, it's a real pity, that this amendment was done quite obviously on the hoof, as has been admitted. However, in the optimism of, and I repeat, working together, if we could just cut out the first part of the amendment, I would certainly support the last part. And I'm quite certain higher authority is actually now working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Wade next.
Thank you, Chairman. When we talk about funding and we talk about services, we talk about the whole mass of bureaucracy, local council, what we sometimes forget about are the people at the end of that. The old, the vulnerable, the young, those people that need our services to get by. And many of these people are in a dire straits. We had increasing demand for children's services and for adult services prior to the Covid. We had reducing budgets. We're having to set officers, we're trying to find all manner of ways to still deliver a level of services in a very challenging time. And now the situation is much worse. The impact of Covid won't go away once the vaccine hit. It will be intrinsically in people unemployed, families devastated, more children going into care, more problems for the elderly. It will be a plethora of problems that this council has to deal with. And I want to speak on behalf of the people of Hampshire who need these services. We must, as a council, do everything, heaven and earth, we must move, to get the government to give us the funding we need for the people of Hampshire. to give us the funding we need for the people of Hampshire. We have a duty, chairman. Every one of us, regardless of party, are elected to serve our members, to our communities and our divisions, and we cannot stand by and ignore this. I totally support the amendment. I'm quite, I'm quite ambivalent if you want to change some words, but the, the point is, we must do everything we can to get the government to support the people of Hampshire. I can only say more than that. And every member in this virtual chamber should be doing the same, because we owe it to the people that elected us, we owe it to the people we represent, we owe it to the people of Hampshire, the old, the vulnerable and the young. And that group that have been using our services is increasing because of this virus, and will increase because of this virus, and we must stand up for them, we do all we can. So chairman, I propose that we support a version of this amendment that we can get through, because we need to tell the government, enough is enough, we need funding for the people of Hampshire. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wade. Councillor House, you've obviously spoken already, but I presume you want to speak specifically about paragraph E.
Yes, indeed, that's, yes, indeed, that's right, chairman, just on this amendment from councillor Todd. And I think the point is, this shouldn't be, and I don't believe it was, until a couple of colleagues recently mentioned, a party political issue at all. It's about putting Hampshire first, and it's about putting Hampshire before party. And it's a matter of record, nothing in councillor Todd's amendment is anything other than a factual statement and an assertion that government should do what it promised to do. And we do have a broken promise, and we need to be clear on the spending review. Councillor Perry is wrong to say we need to wait for the financial settlement, that's a good delaying tactic, but we know the headline figures from the Chancellor of the Exchequer is that spending power for local authorities will rise by 4.5% next year. And that's on the assumption that upper-tier councils like ourselves put up council tax by 5%. And even allowing for a pay freeze, which clearly isn't going to help those public sector workers on lower pay levels, that will end up in a real terms set of more cuts in services next year. And that's a direct consequence of basic demographics that say we have ongoing financial pressures, as reported again accurately in Caroline Williamson's report, that mean that we need to make cuts unless we see a genuine increase in funding from government each and every year. And that's even before we start on the underfunding of Covid. And Rishi Sunak and Robert Jenwick were really, really clear back in March, do whatever it takes, and we'll cover the cost, because solving the problems caused by this pandemic and getting the nation's health and its economy back together is what matters most. And that hasn't happened. It's not in the spending review, so it must be right that we say to governments, and we say to Conservative MPs in Hampshire, that enough is enough. Funding has to be provided to local government to do the job that's needed to be done. So councillor Todd's amendment is a matter of record, a matter of fact, and I'm very happy to support it. If colleagues elsewhere don't want to, they could put forward their own amendments.
Thank you. The position of your group is now clear. Thank you, councillor House. Councillor McNair-Scott? Councillor McNair-Scott?
Trying to, ah, I'm trying to unmute. I've done it now. Very, very briefly, I couldn't possibly support an amendment with the words condemnatory. So possibly, if it was accordingly changed, but I'm fairly reluctant. I've been, I've been a member for coming up for 20 years, and I think the one feature that I will always remember about budget debates is the Liberal Democrats saying, get rid of the reserves, why aren't you spending your reserves? And I know that was wrong, so I don't have much confidence in their economic sense. So I might consider a modified one without the word condemnatory. And councillor Perry is absolutely right, because the final figure, we don't know yet, and we're not yet at the end of the pandemic. So certainly not the amendment as it stands, possibly if it's softened, but actually preference not to have it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McNair-Scott. Members, my understanding from the leader of opposition is there is no softening coming forward on paragraph E. And so councillor Joy, then councillor Cooper, and then I propose to go to the secondaire, councillor Collett, and then work our way through councillor Reed and councillor Mans, and then we will vote. So, sorry, another, councillor Joy is next.
Thank you very much, chairman. To me, this is actually very simple and straightforward. The role of this council is to be constructive. I also believe, and I would say this, wouldn't I, that we should work as far as possible in partnership. The use of terms such as condemning government or what have you is not in any way constructive. It produces no solutions. You condemn someone, you do not have their hearts and minds and motive. So I see absolutely no purpose whatever in introducing an amendment or anything which uses language such as that, it will not help. I question also whether even if that was removed, and there was a reminder to government, not to an individual prime minister or whatever, if there was a reminder, I, I don't, I don't think that that actually adds anything to what the leadership of this council is constantly doing, and that is engaging with MPs and ministers using exactly that language. So it's not, in fact, adding to anything, it may be a public marker. But as things stand at the moment, and with the amendment as it has been put forward, I cannot possibly support it.
Thank you, councillor Joy. I now have councillor Rod Cooper.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Like councillor McNair-Scott and councillor Joy, there is no way, I feel, that I can support the amendment in its current form. I think if we are going to be united, yes, maybe that reminding the government as a complete council would be the way forward, but I would not support condemning, condemnation in any way, shape or form.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. Councillor Dziewski? And then I have an announcement to make.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I'd just like to say that I broadly agree with the comments made by councillors Carew, councillor Perry and Joy. I really don't think that a hostile and confrontational approach would be helpful. What we need to do is to maintain a dialogue with government and our members of parliament. That is the best way to secure the best outcomes for Hampshire residents. Thank you.
Thank you. My announcement now is as follows. We do need the approval of the secondaire to any change to the amendment of paragraph E. I'm going to pause the meeting for a couple of moments, so that we can all take a quick break and a quick think, and go offline and then come back online in three minutes' time, so that those that are currently discussing whether the changes can be made are able to reach agreement. So I'm going offline now for three minutes. Thank you. Can you take that?
So I go to the second of the amendment as it stands, councillor Collett.
Thank you, chairman. Well, I've listened to everything that everyone has said and I'm astonished that any member of the county council isn't of the frame of mind that they want to condemn a broken promise of this magnitude. We were told very clearly, do what it needs, we will fund it. That was a very clear instruction from government and we took them at their word. And that promise is not only being broken, but you've seen a comprehensive report today as to the impact that is having on our finances, something which I think across the board, we have agreed is a very serious financial situation for Hampshire. So I'm absolutely astonished that the word condemns is causing anyone in this chamber any problem. It seems party loyalty is far more important than loyalty to the people of Hampshire, the people that we serve. This isn't about politics, it is a ploy, it's a ploy to make the government listen. It's a ploy to make the government actually meet the promise that they made to us right at the beginning of this process and not weasel words their way out of it. So chairman, I'm glad the position is that the amendment is staying as it is because I do believe we've got to send a very clear message to government. And if you're not prepared to do that, you need to answer as to why. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. I assumed that you, the use of the word you was to the councillors' honour, not to me.
Yes, indeed, chairman.
Thank you. So we, we move on now to, first of all councillor Reed, then councillor Mans, and then councillor Todd as the mover of the amendment finally. So councillor Reed.
Yeah, thank, thank you, chairman. I, I'm really very sorry that we've had a debate about an ill-thought-through amendment. And I feel most sorry for the officers who worked so hard to produce a detailed report that went into every aspect of our finances. And the debate that we have offered them in return for their hard work is one about party politics and whether we say this, and whether the Conservative group will help to draft a Liberal Democrat amendment, which councillor House has said he, he doesn't want anyway. I really do think that this amendment and the time that we have spent on it would have been better spent discussing the actual substance of the report and any issues arising from that where members might have thought that they could make a positive suggestion as to how the council's finances could be improved or handled differently. It is a great shame that it has descended into a party political debate about who says what. And the amendment is actually illogical in many ways, because there are two aspects in there that are being concatenated. On one side, there is the government settlement, local government finance settlement, which we do want to see as a multi-year settlement, and we do want to see helping local government, and we do want to get as much as possible out of it. And we've been lobbying for that. And I don't know if the leader keeps track of the number of briefings he gives to MPs or the number of letters that he writes, but I tell you that those briefings and those letters will have had a lot more impact than a made-up-on-the-day amendment that we might pass or not pass today. I hope we won't. The second thing is that we issue to the government monthly returns, very well completed, but very well specified by the government, very tightly specified by the government as to what COVID is costing us. And then they make their decisions on whether they return that money. And it's a very complicated area because we have direct expenditure on COVID, and then we have income that we've not been able to raise during the COVID period, and we have savings that we haven't been able to make, and we have the business rates base that is being eroded. So it's a very complicated thing. And we can't make simplistic responses to the government on something that complex. We have got to make the case in detail and argue it. So this amendment has badly served Hampshire, it's badly served our officers who did such a wonderful report to us, and it is not the way forward, because the way forward is in putting forward detailed arguments, detailed logic, and a well-argued case as to why the government should provide the money. That is the way to handle this problem, not a made-up amendment tagged on the end of a debate on the day. So I hope everybody will vote this down and keep with the original strategy.
Thank you councillor Reed. Councillor Mans?
I think it's mainly been said, but I think it's a great pity that councillor Todd didn't think about doing this before this meeting. Because if we'd actually come to a consensus, we may have been able to support it. Indeed, that's what I would have hoped we would have done, and I hope this is a lesson for the future. But if we want to do things together, we need to prepare to do that, rather than simply produce during a debate a very divisive recommendation. The fact of the matter is, this is an ongoing picture. We have, as a result of the pressure we put on government over the last few months, undoubtedly received more than many thoughts. The chancellor himself depended upon the situation with
Let me just give you a second. Hang on a second. Sorry, could you pause for a moment, councillor? Could you all please mute your microphones while councillor Mans is speaking? Thank you. Continue councillor Mans.
Thank you. Yeah, the chancellor at various stages during this pandemic has actually moved to increase, increase the amount of funding. And as various members involved in this debate, huge sums of public money have been used. We now have the largest deficit that we've had since the Second World War. So bearing that in mind, this particular situation isn't finished. If you look at the figures, for instance, on page 30, you will see that over the last few months, the government have actually produced a number of extra grant allocations to us. And I'm hoping that we get more in the future. So I rather believe that given time, the chancellor will commit himself to do precisely what he said in April. But it requires us to also prepare for the worst because we really don't know what that's going to be. So I just believe this amendment is not helpful. It doesn't take, take matters forward at all. We are consistently speaking to government, speaking to ministers, speaking to our MPs, to try to ensure that our council is properly funded. And I'm confident that we will continue to get support from central government. And I don't believe this particular amendment will help at all in trying to actually persuade them to do precisely that. So I am calling upon all the Conservative councillors to actually oppose this amendment.
Thank you councillor Mans. Now, the constitution does not normally permit the mover of an amendment the right to speak at the very end. However, I did promise councillor Todd that that is how we would continue. So as an exception, councillor Todd, very briefly, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I will try to be brief. Councillor Mans has highlighted that our current approach of continuously, we have a current approach of talking to MPs and talking to ministers behind the scenes, and taking the kind of consensual approach which was suggested in councillor Carew's amendment, to the amendment. But what is clear from the paper in front of us that will be asked to vote on later in full, is that the current approach hasn't worked. Local government finance, Hampshire's finance, has been under pressure for years. Every time we're talking about how to cut costs and cut services, and we're now at the stage where the conversations are always about cutting services. The fact is, the promise hasn't been kept. And that has put us in a position where the impact looks set to be devastating going forward, and there are even questions about the long-term viability of the county council unless something changes. And the question in front of us is what needs to change? Now councillor Reed suggested our response, our response needs to be complex. It doesn't. Our response needs to be clear. So what I'd ask you to do as we vote on the amendment is ask yourself, what will have the biggest impact? What will get the change we need? Because allowing the government off the hook hasn't worked, and it's something where today we need to be clear that we will no longer continue along that path.
Okay, thank you. Now, members, we are now going to vote on a proposal.
Chairman, we'd like a recorded vote, please.
Okay, could I have the requisite number of hands going up? Sorry, could I just clarify something with you councillor House?
Yes.
Is the recorded vote purely on the amendment to include paragraph E?
Just on the amendment, chairman.
Just on the, okay. So I'll go back to what I was going to say. First of all, can I see 10 hands go up? I think it's 10 for a recorded vote. During a recorded vote, we will have to call in the chief executive, and he will then make notes. He will call for for, and he will call for against, and he will call for abstentions. And then the count will be done, and that is how we will then proceed. I'm still waiting to see if I've got 10 votes.
I believe we have sufficient hands, chairman.
Do we have 10 up, Keith, Kevin?
Many more than 10, chairman.
Yeah, we have, we have more than 10.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much for that, gentlemen. You can put your hands down now, so as not to, and switch off your hands device, so as not to confuse the voting arrangements. Good. Now, can we be clear what we're voting on? We're voting on whether to include the amendment paragraph E as part of the recommendations on page 25. That's all we're voting on. The chief executive will ask you to vote for inclusion, against inclusion, or abstain. I now hand over to the chief executive.
Thank you, chairman. And so just to reiterate, I'll go through the roll call as usual if we were in the chamber. A simple response of for, against, or abstain. This is with regard to including a, an amendment E. And can I just remind members, please, to switch on before they answer and close their mic down again after they've answered, please? Thank you very much. So to begin, councillor Benison.
For.
Councillor Burkitt.
Against.
Councillor Boils.
Against.
Councillor Bolton.
Against.
Councillor Brunson.
Against.
Councillor Briggs. Sorry, councillor Brunson, apologies. Councillor Brunson.
Sorry, I did say against.
Sorry. Councillor Briggs.
Against.
Councillor Brooks.
Against.
Councillor Burgess.
Against.
Councillor Carew.
Against.
Councillor Carpenter.
Against.
Councillor Carter.
Against.
Councillor Chad.
Against.
Councillor Chegwin.
For.
Councillor Chowdhury.
Against.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Collet.
I think he's having some troubles with his IT. Can you come back to him, chairman?
Yes, certainly. Councillor Mark Cooper.
For.
Councillor Rod Cooper.
Against.
Councillor Craig. Not present. Councillor Dibs. Not present. Councillor Dowden.
For.
Councillor Edgar.
Against.
Councillor Evans.
Against.
Councillor Fairhurst.
Against.
Councillor Forster.
Against.
Councillor Frankham.
Abstain.
Councillor Gibson.
Against.
Councillor Glenn.
Against.
Councillor Grieske.
Against.
Councillor Harrison.
For.
Councillor Harvey.
Against.
Councillor Hare.
Against.
Councillor Heron.
Against.
Councillor Hiscock.
For.
Councillor Hockley. Councillor House.
For.
Sorry, I didn't get, councillor Hockley, you are present, I thought you weren't. Councillor Hockley?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Hughes.
Against.
Councillor Humpy.
Against.
Councillor Hookstead.
Against.
Councillor Irish.
For.
Councillor James.
For.
Councillor Joy.
Against.
Councillor Keest.
Against.
Councillor Kempji.
Against.
Councillor Curl.
Councillor Curl's apologies were already given, Jim.
Sorry, thank you. Councillor Kendall, I missed you out, apologies.
Abstain.
Councillor Latham.
Against.
Councillor Mans.
Against.
Councillor McAvoy.
Against.
Councillor McNair Scott.
Against.
Councillor Meller.
Against.
Councillor Mitchell.
Against.
Councillor Macata.
Against.
Councillor North.
Against.
Councillor Oppenheimer.
Against.
Councillor Penman.
Against.
Councillor Perry.
Against.
Councillor Philpott.
Against.
Councillor Porter.
For.
Councillor Price.
For.
Councillor Quantrill.
Against.
Councillor Reed.
Against.
Councillor Simpson.
Mr, sorry, John, I would vote against, but could I ask you to phone councillor Collet as his computer has frozen?
I'll certainly return to him in, in just a moment, and we'll, we'll work away at that. One of my colleagues might do that for me while I'm going through the list. Thank you, councillor Simpson. Could you just remind me again of your own vote, councillor Simpson, please?
Against. Oh, for, I've forgotten.
Big four. Councillor Stalard.
Against.
Councillor Still.
Against.
Councillor Taylor, I think is absent. Councillor Tennant.
For.
Councillor Thacker.
Against.
Councillor Thierry.
Against.
Councillor Thornton.
For.
Councillor Todd.
For.
Councillor Vaughan.
Against.
Councillor Wade.
For.
Councillor Warwick.
Against.
Councillor Westbrook.
For.
Councillor White.
Against.
Councillor Withers.
Against.
Councillor Woodward.
Against.
Councillor Collet, I don't know if your microphone is working yet. If not, one of my colleagues will be in touch just to get your vote through another means. But my colleagues will, my colleagues will also, sorry.
Chief executive, may I as chairman say that since councillor Collet was the second of the motion, I can see that he was voting for. And so I would ask you to record him as for, and we can then move on?
Very elegant, Jim.
Okay. Thank you very much, chairman. And my colleagues will just complete the count if you give us a moment, please, chairman. Chairman, to confirm, we have 19 votes for, 53 against, and two abstentions.
The amendment is lost.
Thank you, members.
Move now to the amendment to the, sorry, the substantive recommendation to council, which is on page 25. And I've been asked to take them individually. So first of all, paragraph A, when I have those who wish to abstain, would you indicate, actually, I think everyone's got an electronic vote, so you can simply vote, I think, in the normal way. Vote electronically now, for, against, or abstain on paragraph A of the recommendation, please. When it comes up.
There with us, chairman, we'll just launch, launch the poll.
Launch the vote. So there it is in front of you now, for, against, or abstain. Is the voting complete? Because I've got a result up here already.
Some, some members are still voting, chairman.
Okay. I've got 65 votes done, have I? 67 now. All right, well, there's 90% for, so I think that takes care of that. Not sure how many of us there are in the room, but I've got 71 votes done. Is it possible for us to move on, Kevin, to the next?
Absolutely, absolutely, chairman, I think.
Except paragraph A has been approved. I would just say that I intend to abstain, but in the event of a tie anywhere, I shall vote for the recommendation. The next one is up on the screen for you, to vote paragraph B, for, against, or abstain. Okay, it seems stuck on 68 votes, still 94% for. So therefore, paragraph B of the recommendation is accepted. I move now to paragraph C. Right, I can see 67 votes have been cast, 70 votes have been cast, we have 76% in favour. So that paragraph C of the recommendations is agreed. You can all press your done buttons and we'll go on to the last one, which is recommendation D, to approve the updated timetable. We have 66 votes cast. Right, I now have 72 votes cast, 75% of which are for, so that paragraph D of the recommendations is approved and agreed. Thank you. That ends and concludes item 10. Going to move on now to item 11, which is the part two item from Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority. There were no questions in respect of 11A, I'm told, which means that I ask councillor Chris Carter, the chairman of the authority, and the chairman of the shadow authority, to discuss 11B and C. Thank you councillor Carter.
Thank you, thank you very much, chairman. Before I come to the minutes, just a short statement. The chief fire officer, Neil Oden, has contacted me this morn-
The chief fire officer Neil Oden has contacted me this morning. And on his behalf, I can announce that the fire service is in immediate discussion with the North Hampshire Health Teams to establish a vaccination centre at Basingstoke Fire Station. I have no further information at this time about this, but I thought it would be helpful for members to be advised of this, this development. So moving to the minutes, the two sets of minutes that are before you, members, relating to the meeting that took place on the twenty second of September. Eleven B relates to Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority. Eleven C relates to the Shadow Board, Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Authority. I have nothing further to add, other than to confirm to you that the new fire authority will come to fruition and be established on the first of April next year. So as I said, nothing further to add, but obviously happy to answer any questions. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. As these are part two items we are dealing with now, there is no voting. But there is opportunity for members to either question or comment on the item. Do you have any question? No questions, councillor Carter.
Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much councillor Carter.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to item twelve. The constitutional arrangements, appointments to the health and wellbeing board for Hampshire. Councillor Liz Fairhurst is the chairman of this board, of the health and wellbeing board. Would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, these are just appointments, new appointments to the health and wellbeing board. The two appointments, as you see, are noted at one point three. And I'm happy to take any questions or listen to any comments.
Questions? No hands going up. Comments? No hands going up. Thank you. We move on to item thirteen. The executive and committee reports. The first one is from the lead member for children's services and young people, councillor Patricia Stalard, please.
Thank you, chairman. All the essential bullet points are there with links to the relevant decision day papers if members wish to delve more deeply into the items. So I really have nothing to add at this moment in time.
Questions? Councillor Porter.
Thank you. And I'd just like to ask, it's related to paragraph two point two on page eighty one, which relates to the likely costs of food post December the thirty first, when we'll be leaving the EU. And partly the rise in cost is partly because of the uncertainty of food costs. Does the lead member have any idea of the current challenge of actually providing the food for our school meals as well as the likely increase in costs?
Thank you very much indeed councillor Porter. As you are aware, that we provide highly nutritious and locally resourced food meals for our young people at school. And we are fortunate being able to provide them with a really hot meal every day, if that is what they so wish. You quite rightly pointed out the fact that we are still uncertain of the exact impact of leaving the EU on the thirty first of December. But I have been reassured in the calculations provided by HC3S, that is the commercial organisation which provides our schools meals, that the costs they have built into the current figures can be met at least for the coming year. There are additional cost pressures arising from the government's plan to introduce plastic packaging as from April twenty two. So there may well be a need at some time in the future to have a further review of the cost of three school meals.
Thank you. No further questions or comment? Good, we go to paragraph thirteen B of the agenda. The executive member for education and skills. Councillor Roz Chad to report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm pleased to present this report to the council on the expansion of Osborne School on the site of King's School.
Thank you councillor Porter.
I just wanted to raise the fact that we are seeing this increase. And I'm greatly appreciated in a number of other capital items that have come forward. And I just wanted to raise the fact that we are encouraging schools to take up additional special needs provision right across the county. And I look forward to the council receiving perhaps a members briefing on this so that all members can understand the impact of the special needs provisions across the county. The impact it has not only on our budget, but also on provision for young people right across the county.
Thank you councillor Porter for your kind words. I will see if we can get that sorted for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chad. Now, executive member for public health. There's a separate report here in mod gov. Councillor Judith Groziewski.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I think the report is self explanatory. I was very pleased to approve the funding to continue to support our residents who are trying to achieve weight loss. But I would just like to draw members' attention to paragraph one point three, about the size of the problem, if I can put it that way. It's estimated that sixty three percent, I mean, that's two in, two in three people. I know you can work that out for yourselves, but two in three people in Hampshire in the adult population is overweight or obese. And that's higher than the proportion estimated for England and the southeast region. And also to paragraph one point five about the urgency of addressing excess weight in the population. It has been brought even more into focus by the evidence of the link of an increased risk from COVID nineteen. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments? Moving on then to row thirteen D, which is the report of the executive member for adult social care and health, councillor Liz Fairhurst.
Thank you, chairman. This is about two tranches of money, if you like. A social inclusion grant to Basingstoke and Dean Council and a demand management and prevention grants. Happy to take any questions.
Councillor Cooper. Councillor Cooper, are you there?
Yes, I am, chairman, thank you. Can I just refer to paragraph two point five and thank the council for the continuing support of unity? The existence of unity here in Test Valley and over in Romsey specifically has, I think, actually reduced the demand on the county quite significantly over the last few months. And they're all working very, very hard. So I thank the county on their behalf.
Thank you councillor Cooper.
That's it. Well, I'm very sorry to have to tell you people that this most enjoyable meeting is now over. Thank you very much for your contributions. Thank you very much for your understanding. And I'm sure we've all learned some lessons from this morning's proceedings.
Thank you, chairman.
But I hope, I hope that the members of the public who've been watching will appreciate the extent to which we try and run a democracy and do the very best for our people here in Hampshire. Thank you.